Hello?
At ease.
Is the mic on?
We may just really just let you know from a broadcast standpoint.
Oh dear, oh dear. They're going to miss the introduction. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the October meeting of the Concord Zoning Board of Adjustment. Before we get started, I have some not necessarily terrific news, which is that one of our members was taken ill late in the game, and we are down to a four-member board this evening, which means that you can have your case heard by a four-member board. Any motion will have to pass with three votes from the board members. If you're not happy with the results, you will not have grounds for rehearing based on the number of board members. Is there anyone here? You have a -- you are entitled to be heard by a five-member board if you so wish. Is there anyone here who is on the agenda for this evening who would prefer to be heard by a five-member board and would like to defer? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands on that. You can always speak up later if you change your mind. So we will have a five-member board. We will follow our usual procedure, which is to say we will take the cases up in the order in which they appear on the agenda. I will ask the appellant to come forward and be seated and sworn in and identify his or herself and give us whatever information that they would like us to have. We request that if at all possible, they can find their testimony to a 10-minute interval. We will then ask the appellant to step down. We will request testimony from anyone else in the room who wishes to be heard on the case, both for and against, and we request that those people, if at all possible, can find their testimony to five minutes. We will then check in with code enforcement and find out if there's any notes from their office that we ought to hear that we haven't yet. And following that, if there has been any information that has been offered that seems to bear factual clarification, justify factual clarification, the appellant will have the opportunity to provide that clarification, not new evidence, prior to our closing the hearing. We normally will act on each case prior to taking up the next one. There is one variation in procedure this evening, which is to say we do have a request for a rehearing. We don't necessarily take testimony on a request for rehearing. It springs from a memorandum or a letter that we've received, and the board will consider requests for rehearings and must find, in order to grant a rehearing, that there has either been an error in law or an error in procedure or new information that is bearing on the case, on the decision that might change it, that has come to light after the original hearing. So that's case 4622, 135 North State Street, RN Residential District. The owner is 135 NSS LLC, and the owner requests a rehearing. This one was a review of the administrator's decision regarding the current uses of 135 North State Street in comparison to the permitted uses and current zoning relief for the property. The variances were granted for the principal use of F1 with three to four live work units. During a recent review of the property and website, it was determined that the carriage house is being used in a different classification than general professional business district and was classified as a commercial indoor recreational facility, use C3. When the board heard this case, it upheld the code enforcement administrator's determination, and we have a request for a rehearing. So I put this to my colleagues on the board, starting with Andrew. Did you notice any information that was submitted that consisted of substantial new information or pointed out an error in procedure?
Well, I read the memo, you know, it's very detailed, and this was a complicated case to begin with, so I think it -- a little more thoughts than on average for a rehearing. I think the only substantial piece of it that I think raises a new question, although I'm inclined to vote against a rehearing, however, the municipal estoppel issue is -- it was touched upon at our meeting, but we didn't -- it wasn't really raised in that context by the applicant, I don't believe, at least I don't believe it was called municipal estoppel as explicitly as it is here, but I'm -- I don't believe we -- well, actually, I don't know. I don't recall us ever facing a municipal estoppel issue before, and I wonder if that's a -- if that's a claim that the zoning board has the authority to rule upon. I mean, all we can do is look at variances or decisions by code. This is sort of a factual claim that they relied upon representations by town authorities to their detriment, and I just don't think -- unless somebody feels differently, I don't believe we, as the zoning board, really have the ability to vet or understand that claim, because it really requires a lot of factual determination, almost like an evidentiary hearing, that I think really a court would have authority over. So the municipal estoppel issue is, I think, different than what we looked at before, but I don't -- I'm not really inclined to grant a rehearing for that. I just don't think we have the ability to really rule on that issue.
Ted?
Well, having not been on the original case, I've read this in detail, and what I'm looking at are two things that may be new. Maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, and that is the statement from Mr. Walker and the statement from Mr. Durfee.
They are new.
So I mean, I would be inclined to say if that's new information, then I would be inclined to grant the rehearing.
Nick?
Well, we took a lot of information, and we heard a lot of testimony, but I think Ted is correct about having Craig contribute that piece that we had included, and I would see that as probably new information.
I do as well. I think that Craig's memo, Craig's affidavit here is definitely germane, and had that information been available at the time we heard the case, I might well have looked at it differently. So I would also support a motion for granting a rehearing. Is there a --
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
The vote is three to one with Mr. Winters in the minority. We will rehear the case. So Tracy, you'll reschedule that presumably for the next?
For the next meeting, yep.
Yeah, next meeting. Okay. That brings us to an actual rehearing, which is this is a case that we heard and acted on before, and the board voted last month, I believe, to grant a rehearing. This is case 4422, 179 Pembroke Road, OFP Office Park Performance District by Jeremy Eggleton Esquire for Proverbs 16:3 LLC owner. Applicant seeks to review -- seeks review of administrator's decision interpreting permissible uses under the ordinance. Code administrator letter dated June 1, 2022 determined that the complex of the 62 monolithic domes to be used for short and long-term rentals is not allowed use in districts zoned OFP without zoning relief. And the board found that the criteria for a rehearing were sufficient to grant, and therefore, the appellant is back before us this evening.
Thank you.
You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but?
I do.
Would you identify yourselves for the record, please?
My name is Jeremy Eggleton with the law firm of Orr and Reno on behalf of Proverbs 16:3 LLC.
And I am Casey DeSafino, the owner.
Mr. Chair, on the application, this is applicant requested a continuous November 2.
That was before we rescheduled for the -- that was the original meeting date?
That confused me as well. Now I understand.
Sorry. The packets went out with your original meeting dates.
Yeah, right.
When we rescheduled it to this week, they were available to come and preferred to come earlier rather than waiting all the way through November 2.
All righty.
My apologies for not making that clear.
No, no problem.
So thank you very much for accommodating me. Last week was my wife's birthday, so.
Well, we cannot have you hanging around here during your wife's birthday.
That was the general consensus in my household, anyway.
Right decision was made there.
So thank you, and thank you also for scheduling it tonight because we were able to get this in, and we appreciate the hearing. So after we submitted our prior proposal, which I'm assuming will be part of the record of this hearing, so I'm not going to reiterate the thrust of everything that I put before the board at the prior occasion, but I did want to talk a little bit about the new information that we fleshed out, I guess you would say, after the board's decision in August in this matter. And that is that, as we mentioned during that initial hearing, there are long-term stay hotels in the city of Concord, and they have kitchen facilities in them, and not just kitchen facilities that serve the hotel or motel as a whole, but rather in each individual unit. And so we specifically looked further into the Marriott Residence Inn, which is at 91 Hall Street, and, you know, it advertises itself as a long-term stay facility. It's categorized by the city as a hotel, and it is a hotel. The city, in my view, made the right call on that permitting decision to permit a hotel. But what makes this hotel similar to what we're proposing is that every single one of the rooms, 92 rooms in this hotel, has a kitchen in it. And that seemed to be the salient distinguishing factor that caused the board to say, look, this is more analogous to a single-family residential setup, what we're proposing, than a hotel. And because we have hotels in this town that already exhibit these features, everyone who walks by this building views it as a hotel, and the city properly views it as a hotel. So what we're proposing is no different from this. We did a little bit of looking into some of the details of the Marriott Residence Inn. Most of the rooms have basically an oven top with, you know, where you can turn on and cook things on the stove top, as well as, you know, typical kitchen features like a table, dinnerware, silverware, glasses, place to clean up your dishes after the fact. And a lot of the units, we're not precisely sure of the number, have full-blown baking ovens in them, so these are kitchens inside these units. And the stays at this hotel vary in length substantially. Just anecdotally, we were speaking with some people who had either stayed there or worked there, and they said that, and again, this is anecdotal, just what I learned from people through my client, is, you know, there are people there that stay months on end, even years in some cases. And that's the kind of lodging situation that we envisioned, because it allows people, if they're moving into town, to have a place to land, establish themselves professionally, and then they can move into, you know, traditional single-family homes or multifamily dwellings or whatever it is they can find once they get here. Or, as I said, you've got, you know, a nurse from Texas who's got a contract appointment here at Concord Hospital. She's only going to be here six months to a year. It's perfect setup for someone like that. So there's a whole host of different professional opportunities that might draw someone to Concord with a need of this kind in terms of housing. I really appreciate what I perceived to be the board's general enthusiasm for this project, which I shared, and I understand that, you know, that you felt initially that the ordinance didn't support this project, perhaps we need a corrective, but I don't think we do. The city also already recognizes these facilities as hotels, and I think this should be recognized as a hotel. Now, I'm only seeing, I guess I'm looking at the memorandum from the city, from the zoning office, you know, regarding the fact that permits for 91 Hall Street were issued in 2009, that it's a separate and distinct case from the one in front of you this evening, and zoning and building decisions are not precedent-setting. I agree with all of that. I'm not arguing that you established some kind of erroneous or negative precedent in that case. I'm saying that that was the right call. That is a hotel, and this is also a hotel. To the extent that this is now an enforcement matter for the code administration department, you know, my view on that is that it is -- this is a facility and a use that has demonstrated utility for the people of Concord and people who want to stay in the city of Concord while they are establishing themselves. My guess is that it's used on a regular basis to help people who need housing in the short term, and that stopping that or removing that from a possible, you know, housing perspective would be highly detrimental to the city of Concord. So we're not here to argue that somebody else, you know, needs to be held to account because we didn't get what we wanted. We think the reverse should be true, that, you know, that's a great use for a facility. It's a great -- it's a great opportunity for the city, and that city should expand that opportunity for other people who want to do something similar. And the fact that code 3000 is an assessment code in no way influenced the zoning conceded, but it's clear that this -- if that is the case, then I'm not sure how it's categorized under the zoning ordinance. I mean, it does state on the tax card that the land use -- under the land use section, the use code has a description of hotels. So it's a hotel, and this is a hotel. So for all of those reasons, we believe that this board should reconsider and rehear the prior application and permit my client to develop her hotel on this property. Casey, is there anything else you want to add?
I don't think so. Thank you.
Questions from the board?
What's the significant -- what does this mean, code 3000?
So I don't really know. I tried to drill down on that inside vision appraisal to see if they had some kind of definition for it, but I take at face value the zoning administrator's memorandum, which states that that's an assessment code. It's not a zoning code, per se, and I guess that was my point, that that might be the case, but it's still a hotel. I don't see it as being characterized as anything but a hotel.
Other questions from the board? Nothing? Ted? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Shall we -- oh, yeah.
Yeah, why don't you
Thank you.
-- step aside for a few minutes, and we'll see if anyone else has anything they'd like to offer. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who wishes to be heard in opposition to it? Please come forward. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. May I swear you all in? So we have to tell the truth and nothing but?
Do.
Would you identify yourselves for the record as you testify, please?
Yeah, my name is Mark Puffer. I am of counsel with the law firm of Preddy Flaherty Bell of One Paces, and I'm here instead of Dan Lucre, who appeared before you on August 3. Dan is unavailable tonight and asked me to pinch-hit for him.
I'm Mark LaRosa, a butter to the parcel.
And I'm Hattie LaRosa.
What would you like us to know?
Did I hear you say you would like us to finish in five minutes?
I did.
Okay.
If you can do that, you will earn our undying admiration and gratitude.
I will do my absolute best.
If you can't do that, as long as you're contributing useful information,
Okay.
just keep going.
I will tell you that I rehearsed this sometime a couple hours ago, and it took me about 20 minutes, but I will make it shorter than that.
Okay.
And I do have a letter that I would like to submit to you, which summarizes everything that I might not have a chance to say.
Okay.
So anyway, I represent the LaRosas. They reside at 175 Pembroke Road in Concord. The LaRosa's property is located immediately adjacent to and westerly of the applicant's property along Pembroke Road. The LaRosa's position is simply this, that you should uphold the code administrator's decision. Mr. Hall carefully examined all of the applicable definitions in the Concord zoning ordinance. He carefully examined the table of uses, and he correctly determined, we believe, that the proposed use was not allowed in this district, not as a hotel or motel or any other use permitted in the OFP district. Accordingly, you should do what you did unanimously on August 3. At the first hearing, you should deny the applicant's appeal. I won't quote you the definitions, because that takes valuable time, but I think it's pretty clear that what is being proposed here is not a hotel, it's not a building, a large building with X number of units in it, in this case, 62. It's 62 separate dwelling units. Each one of those dwelling units precisely meets the definition of dwelling unit set forth in your ordinance. And for at least two reasons, what is being proposed does not meet the definition of a hotel or motel or a lodging facility as set forth in your ordinance. And those two reasons, the first of the two reasons is that it's not a building or a establishment or a facility which contains multiple dwelling units. And that was the primary reasoning, I believe, of your code enforcement officer, your code administrator, in ruling as he did, that we commonly think of as a hotel as a large building with a number of dwelling units within it, not as 62 separate dwelling units. That, the latter, is a subdivision. They are really trying to subdivide this property into 62 sites. You don't need, for a subdivision to occur, you don't need to have a division of the land by lots, you know, by specific meets and bounds. The definition of subdivision is very broad under RSA 672:14. And that division, that definition is the division of a lot, tract, or parcel of land into two or more lots, plats, sites, or other divisions of land for the purpose, whether immediate or future, of sale, rent, lease, condominium, conveyance, or building development. That's what a subdivision is. That's what they're trying to do, is to subdivide this property. That's effectively what they're doing. Again, and I would also ask you to take into consideration that what they're proposing to do is to have 62 sites here on only 4.6 acres of land. That calculates to only slightly over 3,200 square feet for each of the 62 sites or dwelling units that are being proposed here. If you remove the area for the road going into the property and for the proposed check-in building and any undevelopable land, you're going to have something on the order of 2,000 to maybe 2,500 square feet per site or per unit. And yet, the smallest minimum lot size in Concord in your residential districts is 7,500 square feet, and that's in the downtown residential district. So what the applicant is really trying to do here, we believe, is to circumvent the subdivision laws and regulations and also to circumvent the minimum lot size requirements of zoning ordinance that shouldn't be allowed. Now, the other main reason why this proposal does not meet the definition of a lodging facility or, which expressly includes hotels or motels, is that it is, the definition is that it is a building, a lodging facility, is a building or any part of a building which contains rooming units without individual cooking facilities. They are proposing individual cooking facilities. It's not a lodging facility, it's not a hotel or motel. The applicant is proposing 62 different buildings here, each of which will have individual cooking facilities. Applicant is not proposing a lodge facility or a hotel or motel within your own definitions. Attorney Eggleton discussed the Residence Inn situation. It's true that the Residence Inn, I think we commonly think of as being a hotel, and it's also true that it has individual cooking facilities within each of their units. As I understand, there are 92 there, and each of the units have either a stove or at least a stove top and a microwave. The Residence Inn probably doesn't meet the definition of hotel or motel under the ordinance. It could be that in 2009, when they applied for approval, they probably should have had to get a variance for the allowance of cooking facilities within the units. Doesn't meet the definition of hotel or motel, and I'm assuming the definition was the same back then as it is now, precisely because it doesn't have, they are, they do have the cooking facilities within each unit. But whether the Residence Inn is a hotel, it's an interesting question. Certainly, it was categorized that way, I would assume, by the city, but that has little or no bearing on whether what the applicant is proposing is also a hotel. That a Residence Inn may not technically be a hotel or motel within the meaning of the zoning ordinance does not somehow convert the applicant's proposal into a hotel. If the Residence Inn is not a hotel, and it's not under the definition, even though its 92 units are located in a single building, then clearly what the applicant is proposing, which is 62 separate dwelling units, is not a hotel. It's simply not a hotel. There was some talk at the meeting on August 3 about perhaps the category here really is tourist cabins or travel cottages, however one might describe them. And the applicant in this original application focused on this, the proposed development being kind of similar to the 1950s or 1960s tourist cabins or travel cottages. And a few of those still exist in Hampshire, mostly as grandfathered or non-conforming However, the, this is new. This is a new proposal. It's not grandfathered. The Concord zoning ordinance does not expressly permit tourist cabins or travel cottages, nor does it have special provisions within the ordinance for residential short-term rentals. nor does it have special provisions within, within the ordinance for, for residential short-term rentals. Concord has a permissive zoning ordinance. I'm sure you've heard that before. Basically, all it means is that uses to be allowed must be expressly permitted or accessory to a use that is expressly permitted. If proposed use isn't permitted, it's prohibited. And that's what we have here. Tourist cabins are not expressly permitted, and thus, the applicant's proposed use is prohibited without some relief, some extraordinary relief from this board, such as a variance or a change in the zoning ordinance. And that's where I think we, how the city of Concord should really be handling this, this proposal. In its July 1, 2022 appeal, the applicant asserted that its proposed development, quotes, "would place the city of Concord at the forefront of creative lodging options," end quotes. At the August 3 hearing, according to the minutes, Attorney Eggleton said that the proposed project was, quotes, "innovative and cool and a creative solution for a serious public policy," end quotes. All or most of that may be true. The applicant's proposal is creative. It may be cool, I don't know. And it may address a public policy issue. But that is no reason to distort the plain meaning of the Concord zoning ordinance. Under the plain meaning of your definitions, they're proposing 62 separate dwelling units. They're not proposing a hotel or motel. Near the end of your August 3 meeting, ZBA member Winters stated that he was disappointed in what appeared to be the consensus of the board at that point. And he stated that, quotes, "the, the city should have something to support this type of project, and maybe the city council will address it at some point," end quotes. Member Winters was precisely correct in that regard. It is the city council following public hearings before the planning board, which decides whether to do something creative and cool and, and which addresses the social policies that have been addressed. The city council may expressly allow tourist cabins or travel cottages in certain zones. It may change the definitions of hotel or motel and lodging facility. It may adopt some innovative provisions for short-term rentals. There's all sorts of things that it could do to address, to address these issues. But it is the city council that must do this, not the zoning board on a case-by-case basis. It should also be pointed out that if the city council chooses to address this, this, this social policy issue and it decides to do something more creative than what we have now in the zoning ordinance that would allow this type of project in, within the city, there is no guarantee that it will allow this type of use in this particular district. It may allow tourist cabins or short-term rentals in any number of other zoning districts in Concord. And indeed, if the city council comes up with a creative solution to address what is perceived as a social policy issue, it is likely to do so and allow this type of use in one or more of the 16 residential districts in the city of Concord, not in the Office Park Performance District where this proposal is being set forth. But again, we don't need to speculate about where or exactly how the city council might address these issues. We need to deal with zoning ordinance as it exists today. You were correct on August 3 when you unanimously decided to deny the applicant's appeal. We would respectfully request that you do so again for the reasons that we have set forth. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I'd like to submit that letter for the, for the record.
Where is the letter?
I have it right here.
Okay. Would you pass it over to Tracy, please?
Sure, there's an original, and I think seven copies.
Are there questions from the board? No questions. Ted?
I have a question.
Andrew, go ahead.
So in your analysis, it's more similar to a dwelling unit, or, or your argument is it is a dwelling unit, they are dwelling units, not, okay.
Yes, each of them are.
What about, the small size of them? I mean, is there, are there, is there any comparable dwelling units in the city that are only 300-some square feet? Does that, what do you make about that distinction?
I'm-
And then the other, and then all the answer once, the other thing that I'm thinking about is they, they don't have a foundation, I don't believe. So does that, what do you make about those distinctions?
Okay. First of all, I don't know whether there are other dwelling units of, of this size. I do know that your zoning ordinance does not make a distinction based upon the size of a dwelling unit. That is, a dwelling unit is only something more than X number of square feet or something along those lines. In terms of a foundation, I don't believe that's part of the definition of dwelling unit. I think if you go through the definition of dwelling unit, what they are proposing here is precisely, precisely meets that definition. Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard in opposition to this proposal?
Mr. Chair, I did receive an email from a resident who couldn't attend the meeting, who is in a butler at 183 and 185 Pembroke Road, Charles and Jean Fenderson. And they just wanted the board to know that, that this zoning application is not acceptable to them, is the wording they used.
Yeah, alright.
So they would like you to uphold your original decision.
Where is that addressed relative to the site? While we're looking for that, did, did I see anyone else who wished to be heard in opposition? Alright. Comments from code enforcement?
A couple. I think Attorney Puffer reiterated a lot of my statements that I was going to make. But I'm gonna go backwards in regards to the, your question regarding a foundation. No, they will not be on a foundation, but they will be on a legal IRC pad, sort of like your manufactured homes are installed on a pad. These are not movable units. They do qualify as a residential unit based on our IRC building code, which is what my letter was stressing for my original interpretation of this. It fell more into that category than any definition we had without going through all our definitions. It just didn't fit in there. I termed it to be residential units. The size is not an issue. I agree that they, as long as it meets code, that's about the minimal size, it'll meet code.
So you may have already adjusted, so I apologize. Is there any, to your knowledge, zoning rule or building rule that has a minimum size of a, of a single-
Well, yes, there is. So the IRC will require a room to- zoning ordinance has it also, but I, I'll speak from the IRC, the building code. Does have, one room has to, don't quote me on the numbers, but has to be at least seven feet long or, but there, there's a minimum for the room size.
For a room, right.
Well, and then that room, you can have a house with one room that has a cooking establishment and a bed in there, and, you know, one egress, and you're, you're legal. It's, it's very minimal that you need to have a qualified residence.
So theoretically, someone, what, what about, what were you guys-
So the only provision of the ordinance that deals with size is in manufactured housing, which deals with both size and foundation type. And so those types of units are considered manufactured housing, which is allowed in its own districts in the city, but not in this type of configuration that they're proposing. It wouldn't meet the standards of a manufactured housing park. And those are dealt with in the same size generally that we're talking about here. And again, the same foundation configurations.
Thank you.
If I could just wrap up my-
Yeah, please.
The applicant, I think, implied we had multiple long-term hotels. I only know of the one. It was only brought to my attention in this case here. What happened in 2009, I can't speak to other than Rose. We have no staff that was here, that was part of that determination. I also believe it went through planning, site plan review as a hotel. Should it have been flagged when someone looked at the floor plans and realized they had kitchenettes to say, "you need a variance"? More than likely, yes, that probably should have happened because of everything that was discussed. It doesn't fit into our definition as a hotel because of the kitchens.
Very good.
But that's, again, it becomes an enforcement slash lesson learned. It does not establish precedent.
Other questions from the board? Code enforcement?
Not code enforcement.
Thank you very much. Mr. Eggleton, would you like to offer any factual clarification in response to what you've heard? Or Ms. DeStefano?
Thank you, yes. So first, I want to just restate perhaps the obvious, which is we're not proposing a subdivision here. We would be in front of the planning board if we were trying to do that. So characterizing it as a subdivision is really a red herring. With respect to the notion that what we're proposing is really a species of manufactured housing, I would say the same analysis applies, which is that we're not trying to create units that we could then market and sell. So we're not condo-izing anything. We're not looking to sell these units as you would be able to sell a manufactured home with a ground lease. So it's just not, as a, as an entity, it's not manufactured housing. As an entity, what it does is exactly what the Residence Inn does or any kind of long-term stay, extended stay hotel. And it may be there's only one in the city, but there is one, and they're recognized as hotels everywhere. The fact that it's broken up into multiple smaller buildings as opposed to being in one building does not have any relation to the definition of what a hotel is. The definition doesn't refer to a building. It refers to, under the definition of hotel, a lodging facility. And in the lodging facility definition, it refers to a building or part thereof. So for those reasons, if, if you're looking for the definition that best fits this use, it's the definition of hotel. Now, with respect to the use of the IRC building code to make a determination about this because the definitions in the zoning ordinance are not completely applicable, you know, I, if we're looking afield to the IRC building code, then why are we also looking to the assessing code, which already characterizes this kind of use as a hotel? I, I can see the point that the code 3000 in the assessment card for this, for the 91 Hall Street property is an assessing code. But that is an assessing code that characterizes this use as a hotel. So if we are looking afield outside the zoning ordinance for definitional structure to apply here, it should really be the same use that it already exists here in the city. The other point I want to make in relation to the characterization of this use as most like a single-family dwelling. A single-family dwelling is not permitted in the Office Park Performance District as the code enforcement officer has stated. But nor is it permitted in the Opportunity Corridor Performance District. So even if one were to characterize 91 Hall Street as a species of single-family dwelling or most like a single-family dwelling, that is also not permitted in that location. And to the argument that, gosh, we got that one wrong back in 2009, I don't have a lot to say. I mean, I'm not gonna sit here and argue to you something that isn't true, which is that zoning cases are not precedential. They aren't. You're entitled to take every case on its merits. At the same time, I think what the city did in that case made a lot of sense, and it should make sense again here.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We have heard testimony that the fact that there is another, another facility in town that is considered a hotel or was originally classified as a hotel that has kitchenettes in it means that the definition of hotel for city purposes would allow for that. And therefore, the appellant's appeal of the code enforcement determination should be upheld and the determination overturned. We also heard testimony that the Residence Inn, which is the, the facility with the kitchens, is not typical of a hotel. It's an anomaly and not, does not create a precedent to suggest that hotels can have kitchens in each room. Discussion? Start with you, Nick.
Well, I think the argument that having kitchens in this particular thing is similar to the Residence is persuasive. But the fact that it's in separate units, detached units, does it fit the definition of lodging facility? And I don't know if I persuade it yet on that issue.
Ted?
I do not see the equivalency of the two facilities that we're talking about. I just don't see that.
The Residence Inn and the-
I, I don't see that because there are kitchens in each of the 62 units and each of the hotel units of the Residence Inn, I don't, I don't think that makes it equivalent. And I think that the opponent's argument is much more persuasive.
So you'd be inclined to uphold the determination?
That's correct.
Andrew?
Well, you know, I, I appreciate the arguments of both counsel. I think it is very well presented. And the, at the original hearing, we had put a lot of emphasis on the fact that there were kitchens in here. And it was pointed out by at least one board member, I believe, that there, if it's, if it has a kitchen, it's not a hotel. I don't think that's right. I mean, I don't, I don't think the Marriott is not a hotel. I don't think that was an improper decision. But the other issues are it's on the deep, that it's detached, separate units. It does, to me, doesn't squarely fall within a hotel or a dwelling unit. It's hard to just see this as a dwelling unit when they're so small and they're not being resold to individual owners and they're not being rented on long-term leases. Having said that, I, I, I have to, to me, it's a close call because I don't think it fits neatly in dwelling unit or hotel, but I, I suppose it's closer to dwelling unit. So I, I did agree to the rehearing because I, I think that, that kitchen was really important to our earlier decision. I'm kind of putting that aside right now. But, but even so, the fact that it's, that they're detached, that it's, they're not in one building, it really is, it really is like a motor lodge, which I will reiterate. It, it's a shame that the code doesn't have some accommodation for motor lodges. I think the city should take that up because I think that would be beneficial. But I also, you know, I, I have to agree that the city should make that decision, not us.
New information presented tonight. Can I ask that question?
This, well, the new information was the information about the-
Residence Inn.
Residence Inn. And it doesn't have to be new information. Once we determine a rehearing, it's a rehearing, it's a rehearing. They could come tell us the same thing. My take on this is, yes, the, the question of whether or not kitchens were in any other building that we called a hotel in town did figure into my decision. But the fact that we found one doesn't necessarily convince me that the separate units with individual kitchens in them represent a hotel. Both the presence, the ability to keep house in them and the fact that they're separate units, both figure into my agreement with code enforcement that in order to do this, you would have to get a variance, that it's a different type of use than a, than a hotel and not permitted in that zone. I agree with Andrew. It may be that we have found a hole in the ordinance, that there's a place that the city council and the planning board ought to take a look at and decide whether or not some kind of multi-unit, relatively short-term residential use is appropriate and therefore, when, or where, excuse me, which they haven't done. So I'm inclined to agree with those who would oppose the, the granting of the variance for, for those, or not the variance, of the overturning of the code enforcement administrator. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I move to uphold the administrator's decision.
For the reasons that you and others stated?
Yes.
Anyone care second?
I'll second.
It's moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? The vote is, was, you also voted in favor of the motion?
Yes.
Okay, the vote was unanimous. The code enforcement officer- The code enforcement officer is, decision is upheld. That brings us to case 5522, 28 White Street, RN Neighborhood Residential District. Karen and Joseph Carew are the owners, and they wish to replace a three-bay garage with a two-story garage carriage house, expand the second floor of the existing single-family dwelling, and replace existing stairs with a six-foot by 15-foot porch. This activity would require the following variance. Under Article 2841H Table of Dimensional Regulations, to allow the single-family dwelling to become more non-conforming with respect to the front setback, and to allow for additional floor area of the single-family dwelling and garage to be on the side and rear setbacks. Do you both swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
I do.
Would you please identify yourselves for the record as you testify?
Joe Carew.
And I'm Karen Carew. We're the owners.
What would you like us to know?
I'd like you to know it's the end of the night, and this should be easy, so you're welcome.
It's not the end of our night, so...
I'm sorry. I think the application speaks for itself. These are existing buildings, they've been there a long time. We adore the neighborhood, we adore the home, and we are simply looking to improve the property with the challenges that exist, as the zoning laws and the variances were all put in after these buildings were built. Would you like me to explain what's already in the application in terms of what we planned? Or do you have questions?
You don't necessarily have to do it word for word. We have read the application. I would suggest, do suggest, that you give us your views on particularly the issue of hardship, and what hardship there is that goes with the land that would justify a variance in this case.
Sure. Well, looking at the carriage house at the back, there is no way to improve that building or to work on that building within the existing variances that are now in place, and we are simply trying to, maintenance on the building, improvements to the, just typical stuff that you wouldn't normally be able to do.
Now, when I looked at your plans, I wasn't 100% clear on the site plan. Let me get to that, what I was looking at. There are two site plans here, they appear to be the same.
They are. So I met with the city to put the application together and make sure it had everything that you guys would want, and the first map that I did, when they shrunk it down, it did not maintain the ratios, and so the city requested a second one that retained the proportions of it so that it was clear on.
All right, so you could scale it?
Exactly.
Okay. Now, what I'm looking at is the existing, is there anything that shows the proposed?
Their proposed is the same footprint, so it's not, except for the porch on the front.
All right, so is that penciled in here? Is that what I'm seeing, these faint lines?
Yeah, so if you take a look at that map, and I penciled in where the porch would be on the front, it is the only thing that doesn't exist on the existing footprint as is. The stairs are already there, and our goal is simply to make the house more accessible. It sits rather high, and there are just these very steep concrete stairs to get up into it. So we just want to drop a porch down partway, and then a few further steps out, just to make it more accessible.
So the porch wouldn't extend beyond the footprint of the stairs?
Well, it will extend along the side of the house, but it would, the porch would not come out beyond the existing stairs now.
Okay.
It's also, if this is relevant to you, it is also significantly still set back from the sidewalk as compared to neighboring units, like you can see the one right on the corner of Beacon Street. It's just on there, we're not coming out near that far, and we're trying to keep it low-profile. Like I said, we adore this house and the Craftsman, and we're trying to keep it that way.
The front picture of the house that you have in the application shows the porch with the steps.
And you can see where, in that image that you're looking at now, where the steps come out to. That is where the porch would be, going across that front of the house. But again, it would be a step or two down from coming out onto the porch. Again, simply to keep it lower, not have this big, high, caged look.
And the new building, the new garage building, would be a two-story building, whereas the one you have now is a one-story building.
Yes, yes.
What's on the second story of the garage?
It is office space and a bathroom. We both work from home in this tiny little house.
We've been working six feet away from each other for three years.
I see. Well, that certainly would be...
And we're still married.
...grounds for a rehearing. I was being facetious, by the way. Okay, are there other questions from the board?
Any concerns that you would want me to address?
Anyone have questions? Thank you very much. Is there anyone who would like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who would like to be heard in opposition to it? Code enforcement, Ms. Hutton?
I think the only thing that code enforcement noted was that the change in the garage is substantial from one story to two-story, and that was the reason for giving you the picture so that you could get their perspective with their elevations as the change that would have to the neighborhood. But it was just a point of fact for you to be able to look at that, as opposed to, you know, of course, not trying to sway your decision in any way, just trying to give you the fact.
Okay. Now, the reason they need variances is because they're expanding their imposition on the front yard setback by adding the porch. And in the case of the garage, replacing the garage, does that require a variance because it's within the setback?
Yeah, the side and the rear setbacks, yes.
Because they're voluntarily demolishing the old building?
Yeah, it currently does not need setbacks for a side or rear.
Okay.
Right, but because it's voluntarily demolishing it, it does require a variance.
I got it, okay.
If there's loss to natural disaster or fire, they could rebuild without...
Right, okay.
Rebuild what they have.
Right, right. So it's imposing no greater than the existing, but because it's new, it...
Footprint, if not any greater elevation, it's to be determined.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. Unless Mr. and Mrs. Carew has anything that they would like to offer in way of factual clarification?
No.
All right.
I think the image is bleak. It is two stories, but we purposely kept the, notice the roof lines and the elevations start from the first floor, and it's just a little bit of space in the dormer, basically. It's purposely...
Very good, thank you. With that, we'll declare the hearing closed. Now, it's really, public testimony is really closed. And I'll invite the board to discuss the case. We have a request for variance for setbacks. We hear testimony that because of the size and configuration of the lot and the fact that it predates the zoning, that no amendments, reasonable or otherwise, can be made to the building without a variance for setbacks if the footprint changes at all. And we also heard testimony that the existing footprint will change at the porch, but not at the garage, which would be two-story instead of one. Let's start at Mr. Winter's end of the bench here.
So with the, I think historically, we've tended to approve rebuilding on a similar footprint, especially in old zones with properties that predate the zone. So the only issues are the second story on the garage and the porch. I think the porch seems reasonable. The two stories in the garage is the only thing I'm slightly caught up on that I would, you know, wouldn't mind hearing other people's opinion about it, whether that's a reasonable use here.
All right. Mr. Abbott?
Okay, I agree on the porch, especially because we're not increasing the footprint past the existing stairs. I think that's perfectly reasonable and fitting with the style and the neighborhood. With regard to the garage, I guess I would have liked to have seen some improvement on the setback, but I think it's reasonable to, and especially fitting with the neighborhood, to expand the use vertically. So I would be in favor.
Mr. Waller?
Yeah, I don't see any additional encroachment issues. As far as the porch is concerned, it's not exceeding an existing encroachment of the stairs. We're replacing like footprint with like footprint, and we traditionally tend to be supportive of those kind of changes, so I'm inclined to move approval.
I agree with my colleagues. I think the board has found before, and reasonably so, that being overtaken by events in the zoning ordinance can create a hardship for, based on the size of a lot or its configuration, and that is the case here, I think. And I think that the uses are certainly reasonable, and I think they are in keeping with the intent of the ordinance, which is to preserve the fabric of the neighborhood, which I don't see any, anything here that would suggest that that would be injured. Is there, anyone who'd care to make a motion?
I'll move approval.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have just one variance there, or two?
Only one has stated, but it's, I lost you.
Just one, okay. It's been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous, the variance is granted. And now, we go to 5622 128 Horse Hill Road, RO Open Space Residential District, Blackwater Loop LLC owner. The owner wishes to construct a single-family dwelling along with a detached garage containing single-family living space above. This activity would require the following variances. Article 2824H to allow two principal uses, single-family detached dwelling on one lot. And is the, are the appellants here?
Yeah.
Mr. Berninger?
Good evening.
Good evening. Do you both swear to tell the truth, or so help you however?
I do.
I don't think I'm supposed to be pronouncing it matters of religion up here, so we'll just swear to tell the truth. Would you please identify yourselves for the record?
Sure. I'm Tim Bernier, TF Bernier Incorporated, we're helping the Ramens with their project.
And I am Angela Raymond, the owner of the property.
Angela Raymond?
Angela Raymond.
What would you like us to know?
So there's a request before the board tonight to, the application is for a secondary principal use, but that's a really poor description of what the application is, and it just kind of happens that way because of the way the ordinance is structured. What the Ramens would really like to do is they would like to build an ADU for Jeff's mother, so that she's getting older and they can continue to take care of her, she continues to get older. And they would like to do that over the garage, which is a detached garage. They're in the process of building the house now and the garage now, and because an ADU is permitted by special exception in the RO zone, which this property is located, we thought, we were really close. The application proposal that they're looking for meets all of the criteria for special exception, except for the fact that it is detached. It is not, does not share a common wall or a common door, interior doorway. I've been told that there are several examples of this throughout the city, and that this board has granted this variance in the past, although I do recognize that every variance is judged on its own merits. So this, can you bring up the site plan?
Which ones, that, the topo plan?
No, it would be the one that was submitted originally.
Oh.
That's in the application.
I don't have that scanned. Did you submit that before?
We do have a site plan.
Okay, then I have it scanned.
Which is, it's...
Let's see.
This is pretty bad.
Dated August 2022?
Yeah, that is, that's the current, that's the current one.
Okay, it shows... It shows a detail of the house, and the proposed house and the proposed garage, and then it shows the whole lot and an overall plan. That's the one?
That's the one.
We got it.
All right, thank you. So the property, the resulting property is going to be about 40 acres. There's one lot down on Horse Hill Road that they're hoping to subdivide to help defray the cost of building the house. The resulting lot will be 40 acres and have 1,035 feet of frontage on Blackbrook Road. So it's a very large lot with lots of frontage, but it has a great deal of steep slopes. There are very few areas that are eligible for building. However, those steep slopes also created a situation where there are some spectacular south-facing views. So in the one area that the Ramens were able to build, which is shown in the site plan, is, has some really great south-facing views, but it's still relatively steep. The proposal, the house layout...
Want an app pointer?
Oh, sure, that'd be great. So the driveway comes up from...
Sorry. There we go.
So the driveway comes up from Blackbrook Road and comes up, there's, this is, would be like a walkout on this end with the garage doors down here, and then they'll go around to the upper level where there'll be a, the ADU is proposed in this, in this location, and then on the second, the first floor level of the house will be up here. The house, to give you some example of the limitations of the property, the house location is 133 feet above Blackbrook Road and 148 feet above Horse Hill Road. So it's not only, it's 1,000 feet, it's over 1,000 feet from both of those roads. That's the proposed building location. So we have 40 acres, and we're kind of proposing to build a house right smack in the middle of 40 acres. And it really has to do with the limitations of the lot and being able to, and pick the spot and plus the views. So those were the deciding factors. The house itself is a log home. The Ramens purchased the property last year in June, worked to select a house, and decided because of the views that a log home was perfect for this location, being remote and being, we're almost, this is a few thousand feet shy of being in Webster, so we're kind of in the very rural part of town, very, fits with the neighborhood extremely well. But the log home creates some limitations as far as the ability to put an ADU in there and create additional things. The log home is kind of a kit, you pick one of them, they manufacture to order. They purchased the house in April, and it's still being manufactured now, so it hasn't been delivered. They've been hoping, but with COVID and everything else, it's taking forever. So the house is pretty well fixed, and there was really, with the ledge and the other restrictions and the house limitations from the architect that did the log home, there wasn't really any way to attach the garage to the house directly. Obviously, I think they would have preferred that, but it just wasn't possible, so they couldn't, they couldn't do that. So they ended up with a house and a detached garage, and they're trying to find a home for mom, and the garage had a, the garage has an automatic second floor, as you come around to the upper level, and the second floor, so we bring up the architectural plans, I believe it's Raymond Garage. So that's the garage, so the second floor, the garage doors are accessed on the first floor, then you drive around and up to the second floor, and that's where you'd access the front. around and up the second floor, and you, that's where you'd access the front of the house and the garage.
Was this drawing the packet?
No.
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 That explains why I haven't seen it before. Okay.
If you could bring up the house, maybe kind of see how that, that works.
Sorry, can I go back to your...
No problem. So there's the house, so you're looking at the, the same view as the garage doors, and the end that you're looking at is the side that's facing the, the garage. The regulations that one section of the special exception requires that you share an interior wall and a, a, a common wall and an interior door. And if you remember, the, the, the second floor of the garage is in the middle of the garage, to kind of mimic the, the center of the house there. And then there's a roof line in between the house and the, and the second floor of the garage. There's really no way to create a connection between these two structures. So we're, we're left with this, requesting this variance as an option. So I just felt it was important to kind of explain what we're asking, because the, the variance request for a second principal use seems like it could be anything, but really all we're asking, all, all the Ramens really want to do is, is have a, an accessory dwelling unit for their, for their mother. So if you'll allow me, I'll kind of go through the variance.
I do have one question for you.
Sure.
Is the, does the ADU comply with the requirements for ADU in terms of size and so forth?
It does. All other criteria except the interior door and the common wall, because it's in the detached garage. So the, the criteria requires, and I, I've done quite a bit of more research into this because the, so the statute that allowed ADUs, I'm sure you guys are aware, was adopted in 2017. The ordinance was changed in 2018 or about there in the city. So it's a rel, all relatively new criteria. The statute was intended to make it easier to have mom stay at home, and, and also I think they were looking to try to solve some of the housing issues we have in the state. So I was able to, to kind of talk to people about, about the special exception, the special exception criteria and where it came about as well. So I've got some more information on that that I'd like to share with the board. But the criteria, so obviously the, the same criteria that the variance would not be contrary to the public interest, because the request would allow an in-law apartment over the garage. They can take care of mom, they have three kids that they're raising, mom can help with as well, so it's definitely a positive on a lot of different levels for that, in that way. The garage, in this instance, the garage is an integral part of the house. It's not physically connected, but it's, it's an integral part. It's as close as, we're putting it as close as we can get it, because it's obviously their, their garage. They would love to have it attached, but they can't, they couldn't make a way to architecturally get that to happen. But they also don't want it to be 300 feet away, so that they gotta carry the groceries and everything else. They want it as close as possible. So the garage and the house are, are working together, and they're, they're very integrated in the way that they've been designed, in the way that they're laid out on the site. The variance would allow the grandmother to assist with the children and provide care for the, for the grandmother as well. On the site, as far as the public interest in being contrary, the proposal is over 1,000 feet from any abutting street, it's 900 feet from the closest abutting house. It's not even visible from either of the streets. The house location, primarily because of 1,000 feet plus 133 feet vertically and 148 feet vertically, you can't even see it. The garage will be very close. It's only, it's 20 feet or less. I think we're, we're down to like 16 feet between the house and the garage right now, so they're very close. Be the, the granting of the variance will be consistent with the, and with observing the spirit of the ordinance. The proposal would allow the ADU, which is allowed by special exception, and only fails on the one criteria about being connected. The intent of the, of the attached requirement was to prevent changing the aesthetics and character of an established neighborhood. So this is kind of something that I, I've been told, I've been talking to the people that wrote the regulation, and, you know, where did that F come from? Why did they, why did that get put into the special exception criteria? And the, the authors of the regulation were concerned that established neighborhoods, like in South Concord and downtown Concord, where you have houses every 60 feet, and that they've been there for 100 years, if, if half the people on that street built a detached ADU, it would change the character of that neighborhood. It would change the aesthetics and the character of the neighborhood. So that's why they wrote the regulation. They never envisioned, when they wrote that, a 40-acre lot with only one single detached family house on it, when they wrote that, because obviously that's not going to change the character or aesthetics of the neighborhood at all. So, so it wouldn't, the house is going to get built this way, the second floor of the garage would just be a, a bonus room. So nothing actually is going to change with the appearance of the structure, whether the, the ADU is, is permitted or not. And the stated purpose of the zone, and this, this kind of leans toward the, the second principal use, but in that zone, the stated purpose in your regulations for the zone would allow a half a unit per acre, or, or one unit for every two acres. The resulting parcel is going to be 40 acres, that'd be 20 units, and we're just asking for one single-family home with a accessory dwelling unit just being detached. So from a density standpoint, we're way under the criteria. So C requires that substantial justice is done in granting the variance, because the proposal will have no effect on any of the public members. Nobody's going to see this. Nobody's going to realize that there's an ADU in this structure. The design of the house really fits in with the neighborhood, especially if you've been by there and seen the recent construction. The Ramens will build a house, and this will cost you regardless of whether or not this is granted. This, so granting, this is not going to change the architecture of the house in, in any way. So there's no benefit to the public in denying the variance. The proposal complies with all aspects of 28552, which is the special exception for a, an ADU minus the common wall and an interior door. D, the value of surrounding properties are not diminished in granting the variance, because, again, it's 1,000 feet from the closest street and 900 feet from the closest abuter, plus 133 feet vertically, has over 1,000 feet of frontage on Blackbrook Road, so it's, it's in the middle of the lot. It's not going to have any effect on anybody. If any, if it has an effect on anyone surrounding, that would probably be to increase their value. Again, no change in exterior architecture. And then E, the little enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship if the variance is not granted, because obviously hardships are always the, the most difficult, and in most hardships, there's a lot of discussion in the courts and, and deciding what is a hardship and not, and all of the endless documents about hardships, reasonableness often comes into the discussion, and I think this is a very reasonable request. It's not unique to Concord. This has been, there are other examples of this, and it has been granted by the board before. I don't think anybody looking at this would say a, a single-family detached dwelling with one detached ADU on 40 acres is a pretty reasonable request. The other half of the hardship, obviously, is, is inherent in the land issues. And I guess I, you know, in looking at this, and this is what really brought me to start asking the question, but where did this attached requirement come from? And it was pretty clear from staff that worked on the ordinance, that there were individuals in the city that were concerned about the old established neighborhoods. They were very clear that it wasn't about life safety issues, it wasn't about building codes or any of that. It was, it was strictly, if, if a lot of houses in these old established neighborhoods in downtown Concord had this done, they would, you would change the aesthetics and character of that neighborhood, and they really were trying to avoid that, which really put a hardship on this property being 40 acres. It was not, it, not in an established neighborhood, not affecting an established neighborhood, not visible from an established neighborhood. It's going to establish its own neighborhood when it gets built. It really does not fit, so the, the land, based on its location, its size and its character, has an inherent hardship, because it's not what the ordinance intended. It was not, it's actually working in reverse. It's kind of creating, creating issues that it was trying to resolve because of the size and character and uniqueness of the lot. So I guess that's, that's pretty much everything that I'd like to...
Questions from the board. Andrew?
Sorry to make, can you just succinctly, because I didn't quite follow, can you just succinctly, kind of, in like layperson terms, explain exactly why, I didn't quite follow why you can't connect them? Is it because it's the, is it because you chose this spot because of the view and the log cabin, or is there, what, what, why can't you connect them?
Yeah. So we, I mean, you could connect them with a, with a walkway. I'm not entirely sure, maybe building could end in that. There's the criteria for the common wall.
Yeah, the, right, why can't you connect them?
So you would literally need to build a second house attached to this house, is really what they're kind of implying with that, and...
Why can't the garage be attached?
So the garage, there's no, so there, there was no way that the architect, they, they tried to work with the designer of the log home to have an attached garage, and there really wasn't any way to do that with this house. The grade, there's, there's a lot going on out there with grades too, as you could see. We got, the reason why we have walkouts is because of, of a substantial change in grade, which also creates some conflict with, with entering and exiting the garage. So it just, it became extremely difficult. So the, so we're kind of stuck with this two units, and we, and the house is effectively there because it's been paid for, so it's coming whether we like it or not. But it's, it's very difficult to attach a house to a log home like, like a stick bill would be easier.
But it would, and even if you did, it would probably look pretty bad.
Yeah, it would not be attractive.
Any other questions? Mr. Evans, do you have any questions?
I have questions for maybe code enforcement report.
Sure.
Yeah, I have a couple for code enforcement, too. Maybe, they might be the same ones.
Yeah. Any questions? Thank you very much. Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition to it? Comments from code enforcement?
I think the one comment, I just want to clarify, there was a lot of back and forth between special exception and variance. So this is a variance application, not a special exception application. Variance is run with the property, so granting this variance, or not granting this variance, establishes whether a second dwelling unit can be provided on this property in perpetuity, not just be cut, you know, accessory dwelling units are, you know, tend to be for the, for the in-law, but this establishes a second dwelling unit, not an accessory dwelling unit.
But it would have to be according to this plan.
But it would still be a second dwelling unit. It would not have to be according to this plan.
My understanding, and you can set me straight on this, is that when we grant a variance, it's based on the specific plan that we're presented.
It depends on your motion.
How so?
Because if you just say, if you move to grant the variance for a second dwelling unit on the lot, they can build whatever they want. They have a second dwelling unit on the lot.
So a motion would need to say, according to plan so-and-so?
Yes.
And then that stricter would apply?
Then they're strictly, but that plan, the plan provided is a second dwelling unit on the lot, it's...
But it is a particular one, as opposed to just any one?
Right now, yeah.
Right.
But it doesn't preclude additions in the future?
Additions perhaps not, but we have generally, and as far as I know, it's been, pretty consistent, that...
Yep.
If, if there's a specific plan that's presented, that's what the variance is granted for, not some other plan that might comply perhaps with the language of the variance.
Again, it depends on the motion and the conditions placed on the motion.
If you establish the conditions with your motion, whichever way it goes, then those conditions would have to adhere to moving forward.
Got it.
So square footage or relationship to the owner or any of those things can be conditioned?
Right. What, it could be that it conformed with the representation on the plan, no? Yeah. Good.
So, if I could. I'm kind of confused by the language that we're using here. So we're talking about an accessory dwelling unit?
No. Accessory dwelling units have to be attached. This is a second dwelling unit on the lot.
Okay. I stand corrected. Well, I guess my, my problem is that I understand the arguments that the proponents are making. What I have difficulty with is justifying a second dwelling unit like this because of an in-law.
Let's come back to that in discussion.
And, and if we can make it, I mean, I just think if we make a condition on that, when that person leaves the earth, then what, what happens?
We, we actually can't make a condition on who lives there. But let's come back to that.
Okay.
Because that's obviously important. Anything else from code enforcement?
Can I ask code a question?
You bet.
So it is kind of related to the, to the other questions, because I know it's not an accessory dwelling unit, but obviously the applicant is trying to draw that analogy and is part of their argument. And one of the conditions of an accessory dwelling unit is that the primary unit must be owner-occupied, right? But if we grant this, if we grant it as stated, then theoretically that, that would not be true.
Correct.
It could be rented out to, on the rental market to anybody.
Both units could be rented.
Both units could be rented legally.
You could condition that it be occupied by a single-family unit.
I don't think we can. See, we've been brought up short on that in the past. That's actually how the ADU ordinance got created.
All you're saying, what you would essentially be variancing is to allow a single-family dwelling with a second kitchen. It doesn't preclude who can live there. You're allowing a single-family dwelling with a second kitchen.
Don't say kitchen.
I know, I, you know what I mean.
Yeah, we know what you mean.
Yeah, it's just that Andrew is very, very sensitive about kitchens. Okay. I, 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 I hear what you're saying. Is there, are there any other questions for code enforcement on this one? Very good. Then with that, I think we'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing. We have a request for a, to grant an ADU, which is what it says on the plan, that is not directly attached to the, the single-family home with which it is meant to go. We heard testimony that the architecture of the building precludes their attaching it in the way that the ordinance asks for. I do have a question on that. Suppose it were connected, and I think I've asked this question in the past in a similar case, suppose it were connected by a breezeway, say an enclosed breezeway?
Common wall, I believe, is what our ordinance reads.
It does.
Now, could that be, if the breezeway is part of the house, would that not be a common wall?
Not, not as far as I would determine the definition. In my mind, a common wall is a shared wall separating two rooms.
And would it have to be on the second floor?
But wouldn't, no?
Well, in this case, yeah.
Wouldn't, wouldn't a breezeway be a room?
Make it a sky wall room?
Well, even if, say it's fully enclosed.
So, yeah, it probably wouldn't. The breezeway was in...
And I, I put my boots in there.
Right, if you had a mudroom in between the two.
Right, if it was a habitable space, then you're probably correct, yes.
But if I could just, can I pursue that, though? If they, if this breezeway were on the first level of these buildings, and the apartment or this other unit was up on the second floor, then that's not a common wall, correct?
I suppose you could make that argument. I don't think I'd see it that way. Well, why don't we look...
Because we've had ADAs on second floors.
ADUs, yeah, that's all the time. So...
Are they attached to a second?
It'd be over a garage, for instance.
Oh, not attached to the...
And the garage was attached to the house. I think we've had those.
Yeah, we have, we have. Well, so they wouldn't need the special exception, because if they were granted the variance... Well, so they wouldn't need the special exception, because if they were granted the variance, then it's technically not an ADU, is what I'm hearing. Okay. Did I close the public testimony portion of the hearing? Good for me. Okay, discussion. Let's dive into it. What do you think, Andrew?
Well, I understand the applicant, you know, is pushing for this to be, to be an ADU, to be clear, it's not an ADU. So it really, it would be granting a sec, two dwelling units on one property, and, you know, it's hard for me to, the hard, it's a bit of a self-created hardship issue, because there, the log cabin is discretionary, man, it sounds like it's going to be beautiful and a good, a good purpose. But then on the other hand, I, so I don't really buy a lot of what the applicant said, but the piece of it that I do think is somewhat maybe intriguing, possibly compelling, is that, you know, it is a huge lot and a very small second unit that is going to have minimal impact. If we can find a way to limit it, I don't know if we can limit who lives there. That, I think would be improper, but if we could somehow limit it to really minimize the impact, I, you know, I might be inclined to look at it. I'm coming up a little wishy-washy tonight, but...
Well, you're entitled to support member to some wish and wash.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we'll come back to you.
Yep.
Ted?
I'm confused. I'm not really sure where to land on this one, to be honest with you.
All right.
I'm a little bit reluctant to okay the second use.
Right.
I just think it opens up too many headaches as a result.
That's the code enforcement officer.
I think it is, my, my nature, yes.
Nick, what do you think?
Because of the architecture, I think it's, it's, it's not, I don't see it quite feasible without some major redesigning to connect the two, to make it a true ADU as they're proposing it to be. Yet we're stuck with two dwellings, and we can't, and I agree with Andrew, I don't know how we can, how we can limit use of the second dwelling.
Well, let me, let me give you my, my thoughts on that and the rest of it. In terms of the criteria for a variance, there's no doubt in my mind that this does, the proposed use, assuming this thing is indeed an ADU and everything except name, is not inconsistent with the intent of the ordinance or the spirit of the ordinance. It certainly doesn't pose any problem for the fabric of the neighborhood, given that it is off by itself as it is. I think we do have the power to say that, to grant with the condition that what is on the plan is what they do, and that the building otherwise conforms to the requirement, requirements of an ADU, which is what they actually call it on their plan.
Can we impose a condition that the primary home be owner-occupied for the...
I don't believe so.
I think they can condition whether or not they're allowed to rent it or, or convey it separately, though.
I feel like Craig used to say no, because I feel like something like this has come up before, and I don't really see why that, obviously you can't make a condition about who lives there. That'd be improper, you can't say they must be related.
We got in trouble trying to do that.
Yeah. But the owner-occupied, I think, is important to neighbor, especially if this gets subdivided further and it becomes, you know, that, keeping this in a, I assume this is an RO, you know, this is the, people don't want a lot of density in rentals, and we could definitely open the door if, you know, if people could like shoehorn a this type of thing and then come back later and be renting it out to the...
The plan does indicate another dwelling unit on the lot, just...
I beg your pardon?
The plan does indicate another dwelling unit on the lot, like another, in addition to this, there is another one indicated on the plan.
They said they wanted, they did, they did say that.
And they were subdividing?
Yeah, they, and legal, and they could do more if they wanted, right?
Yes.
Yeah, well, that's not our issue, though.
No. But other than it could get more dense, and therefore, I mean, if, if, if we thought it was proper, I'd be inclined to say to also add a condition that the primary home be owner-occupied.
Which would be consistent with it functioning as an ADU.
Right.
In other words, all the, all the conditions that, other than the common wall of an ADU would have to be met, the area, the owner occupancy, the fact that you can't control who lives there, but they can't sell it off separately.
Right, right.
It's not subdivided.
Because otherwise, I think we'd be opening the door to people coming in on a, on this, on a very similar argument, and then expanding it later without any...
Right. Which brings us to the hard part, in my mind, which is the hardship. It's, the, the problem is not created specifically by the land, even by the situation on the land. It's not created specifically by the, by the slope, although the slope influences the design. So what it's created by is a decision on the part of the appellant to have a certain kind of architecture in their house. And that's a tough one. Everything in my architect mind wants to say, there's nothing wrong with this, go ahead and do it. Common sense suggests that it's a reasonable thing to do. The reasonable part, I don't think we have any problem with. The problem is, what causes the issue is not the land, or the situation of the house. So are we in a situation where we just waive that requirement? And I don't see how we can do that. And I, it causes me huge anxiety, because I think it's a perfectly reasonable use. I think the ordinance backs us into a corner here, or at least the criteria for granting a variance backs us into a corner here. Now, if there were some kind of attachment between the two buildings, I'd look at it differently, but there isn't.
Or if they had chosen a, you know, a colonial?
Well, they didn't, so that's not, not an issue.
Right, but they could have.
Yeah. Or, you know, maybe there is some way to create some sort of attachment between the two buildings to, to me, it strikes me as, as angels dancing on the head of a pin, but in other words, attachment, no attachment, what's the difference? But we are forced to confront the issue of hardship. I'm not happy about it, but I don't see it. Everything else works for me. And I don't have a problem with our ability to control what they're doing here, but the, in terms of it being an ADU and so forth, even if it's just a mudroom that connects the two, which actually is not a bad spot for a mudroom, coming right off the garage, but they've probably already dealt with that inside the house. So that's where I come down on it. I'm not happy about it, but I don't see what else I can say.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm convinced by what you've said. I think that the, because they're starting from scratch. I mean, they, all, everything they want to do is, makes sense, but there's trade-offs. You know, they, they could, they, they could have chosen a different architecture that would have still suited the property well and allowed for the, the quote ADU, a real ADU, to be inside the property, to be attached with inside, inside the house, and maybe they...
To it somehow.
Yeah, or maybe they still could, they just eat into space that they'd prefer. What's stopping them from making an ADU inside the lot?
That's not our problem, really. We can only address what they've shown us here.
But I think that goes to hardship.
It does go to hardship. The hardship is self-created here, and generally, we have found that when it's self-created, it's not hardship. If there was a way to avoid it, I think we've, again, we've found a hole in the ordinance, but I'm not sure we're in a position to patch that hole. I think maybe what would have to be done would be, again, the city council would have to say, under X, Y, and Z circumstances, you can have an ADU that's attached in some attenuated fashion.
And I, and I don't doubt the representations about the intent of it, but that's why you can't go off of what the intent might have been, you really have to look at the plain language of what the ordinance says.
Yeah.
Because, you know, you could have 10 people voting, and they all have a slightly different idea of what, why they want to do it. The only thing that we have, you know, people have later to interpret is the exact language.
Yes, that's true. Who knew? Would anyone care to make a motion either way?
Well, I, in sharing Chris's, you know, regret, but I have to move to deny the variance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? With a heavy heart, I call for a vote. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? The vote is unanimous. Alas, the variance is denied.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome. And angels have descended to tell us that we did the right thing.
So what are the rest of the...
We have three more applications.
Either that or Tinker Bell's in charge of security around here, I'm not sure which it is. Okay.
We're done.
We're done, except for minutes.
I guess I don't have a revised...
Where's everybody gone?
Do we have an extra revised one?
That's all we had.
That's all we had for the revised agenda.
Oh, really?
I emailed it.
Party!
No? Did I just email November's?
I just got this list.
No, I meant, not in the packet, except subsequently.
Oh, so 5722, 5822, and 5922 were withdrawn?
No, they were on your November agenda, they couldn't make it tonight.
Oh, I somehow did not process that.
Neither did I.
Will we go for further, do we want to approve the minutes from last?
Yeah, I, I, now, these wouldn't warrant the minutes from last Wednesday, these are minutes from the month, all right?
Yes.
Whatever you want to approve, I'm here for you.
Well, the minutes from last Wednesday, I'll approve without seeing them.
Yeah, we could do that.
Because we did a whole lot of nothing that night.
There's only three of us.
And they were really short, trust me.
Yeah. I came, I saw, I...
Rose must have been up all night, pretty goes up.
So I, I did not sit, so I, I'm not going to consider or vote on the approval of the minutes.
For the September minutes, I was here.
Okay.
I don't know if...
Are you here?
Yeah.
And you were here?
But then we have...
They were very long minutes.
They were very long.
You, you guys...
Very accurate, though.
You guys are, I actually did read them, as it happens, but it, I'm not going to vote on them.
I'm vacation.
I'll move acceptance of the minutes.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there? All in favor?
Aye.
The record will note that the chair abstained, because the chair don't know nothing on this.
It was Andrew, Ted, and I were there, September 7th.
Okay. Is there any other business to come for us tonight?
No.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I moved.
And a second?
So should we just return these three cases?
All in favor?
Keep the other ones, yes, that you're still going to need.